Welcome to the November 26, 2024, 10:30 a.m. Special City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Sign-up cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under public comment. No sign-up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all agenda items. And finally, all sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you, Clerk. Um, Counsel, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular City Council meeting on November 12, 2024.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Minutes are accepted. Uh, City Manager?
Uh, next item is 4B, which is the Resolution Number 23-2024 canvassing the returns of the general election held on November 5, 2024.
All right, we need to approve the resolution on that. Do I have any cards on this?
Uh, yes, sir. One card. Tony Shifflow.
Shifflow, Tropic Street. I couldn't resist Mayor Diesel one last time for you.
One last time.
The word canvassing as relates to election integrity, the Florida canvas process protects the vote. And, uh, each election is required, in Florida, refire, requires a canvassing board. And the duties of this board can be summarized to three main points. To certify the voting equipment correctly counts the ballots, to verify the accuracy and validity of all votes cast, and to submit the official results to the Department of State. However, in November of 2022, this board did not certify the election of the right to clean water. You were led astray by your, um, city attorney who asked to confirm that the city was taking the approach that the language on the Right to Clean Water Charter Amendment was misleading and should not have been on the ballot, and it was preempted by law. Counsel agreed. However, two different judges had already proclaimed that that was not the case. Actually, the language on the ballot was your responsibility to write it and have it there. So later, at another meeting in November, the city attorney's report said that he was providing an update on the filing of a declaratory judgment with regard to the proposed Right to Clean Water Charter Amendment. And he advised that the pleadings were being amended to address the preemption issue, which had already been settled, and address the ballot language for consistency with Florida statutes. Three times already, the rights to clean water, speak up Titusville, have been taken to court. We're waiting now the fourth judgment from the appellate court. Three times, judges have told you there is nothing wrong with the amendment, that the language was correct, and that it is not preempted by the state. And yet, under the advice of your attorney and Collins out of Titus, uh, Tallahassee, who has been unsuccessful every single time he has represented you in court, we're waiting now for that opinion, and I just wanted to bring that to the public attention because sometimes you don't do your duty and certify the election. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Tony. Any other cards?
Sorry, but, uh, may I respond?
Yeah, please.
I would like to respond to that. One, when you listen to our new council members take their oath, one of the oaths, part of the oath is you will follow the law as the state of Florida. Okay? So there is a question about it, and it needs to be resolved. I'm also gonna pu- point out that the judge that heard this case originally was 86 years old. Right. He fell asleep in a murder case. He probably should not have been on the bench. He probably should not have been deciding this case. But either way, we need a clear ruling, which we did not get from him.
I would just like to point out that I think it's extremely unfortunate that you pointed out his age as making him unable to have judgment after years of training. I would think that at 86, he's had a lot of experience, Ms. Nelson, and he could speak to a lot of the laws from having lived through things like that.
He was a great judge, and I will say, before I left office, he wanted to come to our courtroom, and we were all sort of concerned.
And we'll leave it at that. Tony, we're good. Thank you. All right, we, we've got our points on both sides. Any other cards? And we have taken, uh, I need a motion.
Moved to approve Resolution Number 23-2024 canvassing the returns of the general election held on November 5, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passage unanimously. Petitions or requests from the public. That means you don't have to have a card if you're gonna speak here. Hey, we know this guy.
Hi. Good morning, uh, Mayor and Counsel. I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you to each and every one of you for what you do up here. It's a, it, it's a big job. No matter what people believe, it is a really big job. It takes a lot of your time and your effort and, uh, even a lot of your heart. So I just wanted to say thank you to each and every one of you, and especially, uh, Mayor Diesel and, uh, Joe Robinson. I'd like to thank you very much for your, uh, being part of this community and being up here to help lead it in a, in a better direction, and greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for saying that. Come on in, Dwight.
Dwight Severs, Titusville. I wasn't planning on saying anything in light of the insult against Judge Holcomb. I feel compelled to say something.
Go ahead.
Uh, first, what I would like to say is thank you, Joe Robinson, for your service to the community. And thank you, Mayor Diesel, for your service. Certainly, every time I've appeared and citizens have appeared, they have not been, you haven't been rude. You haven't insulted people. You haven't called them liars, et cetera. And I appreciate your service to the community because you set an outstanding example of what should be done.
Thank you, Dwight.
In addition, it's, obviously, it's appropriate to congratulate those who were successful in this campaign and to move forward accordingly. And also, there will be an appropriate time to address some of the issues surrounding the election and participation by certain individuals in the election as such, but that's for another day. Concerning the right to clean water, please remember that the city chose to file amended complaint and take it away from Judge Freeland so that it ultimately ended up before Judge Holcomb. That was your choice, that you did, as such. Taking it away from Judge Freeland for whatever reason, and you, the city, didn't pursue that whatsoever. I know a little bit about it since I was involved in trying to make sure that the people of Titusville had an opportunity to vote upon it, which you tried to take that right away from them. That's an insult as well to the people of Titusville. Likewise, the sitting judge that it was assigned to chose to assign to Judge Holcomb and let him hear it. He must have felt as though he was competent to hear it. You owe Judge Holcomb, who's deceased now, an apology for what you've said. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for petitions and requests? I see none. Uh, City Manager?
It's all yours, sir.
All mine. All right, so we move to, uh, council reports. So I'm gonna start over here, go here, here, over there, and then Joe, and then myself. So with that said, um... Herman?
Yes, I would like for all the council members, please, join me on the floor.
All, all of us?
All.
Are you guys understand?
So I have, you know, everybody says you plaque them and they go. Well, it's a little more than just placking them. This is a very special plaque for someone that we all know and love. Our Mayor Dan Diesel, who has done a tremendous job while serving for eight years, serving... Get your glasses off. Anybody got Kleenex? We need Kleenex. He was crying two weeks ago. He cried a month ago, too.
Don't tell anybody that.
Okay. Big guys don't cry, right? So eight years serving our city. He served from 2016 to 2018 as a council member, vice mayor from 2018 to 2020, and mayor from 2020 to 2024. I came on council two years ago, and I've learned immensely from, for what this young man, and I can say young because I'm old. This young man has, has taught me, and I would have thought that at the ripe old age that I am that I could not learn anything else, but I could. I learned dignity, devotion, and dedication to this city, which we really appreciate, and we really, really hate to see him go. So on behalf of City Council, our City Council members, I'd like to present this plaque to our Mayor, Dan Diesel, who is someone we're definitely gonna miss.
And, uh, Sir Mayor Dan Diesel, on behalf of the staff, uh, 568 of us, I'd like to present this plaque to you.
And lastly, if anyone knows the mayor and knows me, we love to take photos together. Um, so we made a collage of all of our pictures together and selfies.
Oh, my God.
So, yes.
And, uh, on behalf of staff again, Vice Mayor Joe Robinson, uh, served, uh, from 2022 to 2024 and as a council member from 2020 to 2022. Joe, thank you very much on behalf of our staff.
Wait, and my, and lastly, um, Joe doesn't like the selfies as much as the mayor and I do. Um, but we have another collage of pictures throughout Joe's years of service as well.
They said I could go back. Herman suggested that I stay put. I would like to say something about Mr. Robinson.
Yeah, we're gonna talk up here.
So I've known Mr. Robinson for many years. He's in Rotary. He's in the Noon Club. I'm in the Morning Club. And I guess I really got to know him in 2016, 2015, when we were looking for a house for a Boys and Girls Club. And he came to me and said, "I have the perfect house." So I went over and looked at it. If he ever offers you a house, run. The house had half a roof, half a floor. Um, the back wall was plywood. Yeah. And it was screwed in, so the last three feet of the wall was totally open. And he goes, "But it's free." So I, I called a bunch of contractors and I said I needed to be leveled because the floor also was not level. They all came to me and said, "$10,000, we'll have it knocked down in a week." So that house became a Boys and Girls Club. And I realized what, what a, a great heart Joe had for the community. We finally finished it five years later. A lot of, excuse me, Joe, but bad words being said, but it got done. And we went to sign the lease, and on behalf of North Brevard Charities, he gave us that house with no rent. So the Boys and Girls Club last year had 50 kids every weekend. There are over 50. Noisy as all get out, but the kids love it. And so I realized just how big his heart is. And he has come to council, and he has worked tirelessly to serve you guys, our community, to make our community better. So thank you, Joe. Next time, I want a roof. Next time, I want a roof.
That came with no roof.
I want a roof.
You want a roof?
And a floor.
It's not gonna be bad, okay? I've known Joe for probably 25 years as a friend and as a spiritual leader. And for anybody that knows me, you know I need spiritual leadership very bad. So I'm gonna miss that portion of it. Joe and I were in the Noon Rotary together. Joe and I belonged to a social club down in the Melbourne area, and we used to ride together. And every time we would ride together, I would get a scripture lesson. So I'm gonna really miss him. I'm gonna miss his leadership. But he's still a friend, and we'll still be there for him. Thank you.
Okay, so this is a little different than we normally do it because normally I get to look at you guys when I speak. Yeah, I feel like it's like, I want, I'm, I'm gonna go back out there because I wanna look at you.
You guys come up here, too. Now, come up here. This council is hard to crowd sometimes. I'm telling you.
I'm a little stuck in my ways over here.
I don't think I need to call back on you guys, or what?
Am I good to go, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So one of the things that I've loved about serving on council, especially with our Vice Mayor, is, one, he's been my neighbor here. Um, if you do not know, our agenda packets are sometimes rather lengthy, 1,000 pages at times. Joe has that entire packet printed out each meeting, and you can be like, "Oh, wow, that's a lot of paper." I sit here from my viewpoint, and I watch this man go through each agenda item. He has notes. It's marked up. And he sits here quietly looking through. I know he's done his homework prior. Um, and he listens to the residents every time they come and speak. And one of the things I admire most about you, serving as our Vice Mayor, is I know that every decision that you've made up here has been for what you felt was best for the community, regardless of anything else. Um, and I just admire that so much. I also think you had a lot of titles in your life, and, um, the biggest thing I admire about you is those titles mean nothing to you. This was just, this was just another part of your journey, so to speak, to serve on council, to serve as Vice Mayor. But you know that your identity is in Jesus Christ. And to me, it's just so admirable to watch that and see how you live out your life of service and knowing that this is not the end, that you will go find your place somewhere else where you feel, um, God has called you to be. And it's just been such an honor and privilege to be able to serve with you.
All right, just in case, I'm gonna go there, 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 and back here in case there's anything else you wanna say. You good?
I'm good.
Okay. Good?
Good.
Good?
For, for, good for what? Just the Vice Ma- like, are we going to do more speeches?
No. Well, no, 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 no. I get, what I'm saying is there anything else you wanna say?
Before we adjourn?
Yes.
Well, I have some comments for, uh, our mayor over here as well. Um, okay, I can start on this one. Um, so for those that do not know, um, the mayor and I were elected at the same time, same thing as, uh, Member Nelson, back in, uh, 2016. Uh, was not too familiar with either of them at that time, though Travis, who was in the audience over here, uh, we, him and I went to elementary school together, um, back in the day. So it was really cool to see this full circle, and I think that's what I love most about Titusville. Um, it's like, I felt like I knew our mayor, even though I didn't really know him that well. Um, we all started campaigning, and then we just kind of merged together, and we had this quote-unquote "dream team." Um, and we ju- we took pictures together, of course. And again, going and meeting with people, it was so cool to see just how connected you were to the community and just being around you at different events. And it was, "Hey, Coach! Hey, Papa!" I mean, the community loves you so much, and that is so evident, and I think it's so clear. Um, anywhere, I, I've, I felt, I like, I knew a lot of people. No. This is, this is the mayor of Titusville. Um, it has been such an honor to serve with you, to see you be on council, to see you be as Vice Mayor, and to see you transition into mayor, which is one of the toughest jobs, I would say. Um, and you've done it so gracefully, um, so respectfully, the way that you've interacted with individuals, um, the way you make decisions up here. Uh, it has just been such an honor to work with you, to spend time with you. I feel like your family. Um, and I hope this is not, it, it will not be the last time, um, I see you or see you at events. And I don't think it's really sunk in yet, um, that you're not going, that either of you are not going to be up here yet. I think that's going to be hard to transition from, if I'm being honest. Um, just because we, we, we've just been used to this for a while. And, um, I, I've just loved serving up here, making decisions with you guys. It's knowing that you have the best interests of the community, um, at hand, I think, is very telling. It means a lot. And thank you, thank you so much for serving the city of Titusville and for being my friend.
Aw, thank you, Sarah.
Is it my turn?
I guess it's it, because Joe's gonna go second to last.
Okay. So we started out in 2016, really didn't know you guys, knew you but didn't really know you. And, uh, after a little while, it was like we really came together. It was interesting becau- because before the election, we had the opportunity to talk. Once the election's done with, we're done. But before the election, we really thought about what we wanted to see happen. And one of the things was we wanted to see the lagoon clean. And the second thing was we wanted to see our infrastructure fixed, remember?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And so, yeah, I still do. So I don't know if you guys saw it. The Marine Resources Council came out with their new report. Um, I understand in their, they're delivering at their press conference, they were very complimentary to Titusville. So remember before, it was always A, B, C, D, F. And we were F. We were the bottom, bottom rung. Uh, now they're doing it as good, fair, and poor. And we have moved up to fair. So the center part of our lagoon is still poor. The south part of our lagoon is fair. However, they noted a lack of seagrass, which we're getting some. So I think, and we, we've got so many infrastructure projects.
Can we do?
Um, this is crazy. Thanks to, thanks to the ca- the staff, Kevin, Sandy. And I think we accomplished what we, not totally accomplished, but we are on our way to accomplishing those goals. And yes, we did work hard at it. And I appreciate your calmness. I'm the one that sort of seems to get a little...
Agitated?
Well, okay. Agitated. You know, I'm used to being agitated. Sorry. But, uh, you're the calm influence, and I'm really gonna miss that. I hope Andrew knows how to...
It'll be fine.
Put me on a leash. So thank you for the last eight years. I'm gonna miss it.
Oh, thank you.
I'm gonna miss both of you. I'm still not taking the house from you. I'm still not taking the house from you.
You're up, sir. My friend, Vice Mayor Robinson.
Thank you, and we are friends. And I sit here before all of you. I've spent 55 years of my life as a servant. I served 25 years as, in the United States Military, where I was, had the opportunity to save lives and discover and go places from the North Pole to the South Pole. I spent 25 years, 24, serving this community, serving the economically disadvantaged, and bringing together with the advantage to make our community better. I've spent four years serving this community from this seat. And as I look back over those 55 years, I've made some good decisions. And every decision that I've made has profited others more so than myself. I stand before all, all of the residents of the city of Titusville, all of the firemen, policemen, and say to you, I know what it is to wear a uniform. I know what it is to wake up in the morning and not know if you're going to go to bed at night. I know what service is, and the service that I've given to this city has been from my heart. Every person that I've been able to talk with is one out in the audience that served with me on active duty. And he'll tell you how I was back then. There are many that are sitting here that will tell you the things that I've tried to do and the difference that I've made within this community with the lives of individuals that you know, your family knows, and you have worked with. But my life has been a continual education, and I hope that it will continue to educate me so that I can be a help to the people around me, my neighbors, my countrymen, and those who are in need. I've not stopped yet. This is a winning, winning situation for me. My four years on the City Council has been nothing but excellent. Every decision, every person that I've had a conversation with, I thank you for educating and growing me to be a better person and a better citizen to this country and to this city. Thank you for what all that you have given me, including the bad language, the lies, and everything else that you have told about me. I'm in a position to forgive you. And I do forgive you because there were lies that was told. And if you wanted to know the truth, all you had to do was come up and ask me. And I still, if you want to know the truth when I step down from here, you can come up and ask me. I'm person, human, and God fearing enough to tell you the truth. Thank you for your opportunity to serve you in the city of Titusville. I wish the best for the two individuals that are starting this journey. And my advice to them, always tell the truth and live it. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate what you've done for our city, and I appreciate, not just in this seat, but what you've done for the city. And I thank you for being my friend. For my part, I first want to thank all of you who've been sitting up here, because it's not as easy as it looks on TV. It's very difficult, as we've kind of just heard a little bit of that. I also want to thank those who've served previously. I see former Vice Mayor of mine, Robert Jordan, over there. And I also see Mayor Tully, I think. Mayor Tully, raise your hand, thank you for being here. Mayor Swank was up here earlier, I don't know if he's still here or not. Mayor Swank, thank you. I appreciate it very, appreciate it very much. And if you're not standing around and don't see it, the future Mayor is over here, Mayor Andrew Connors, wave your hand, wave your hand. And I've lost her. There she is. I was looking deeper. Anyway, new councilperson, Megan Escaso. I truly wish you guys nothing but the best. And if you have one of those situations where you might be up until 5:00 in the morning, don't expect me to stay on the TV until 10 o'clock, I'm done. Anyway, I appreciate you guys, I really do. And again, I just want to thank everybody who does this, because this is not easy. This is not easy. I can tell you that I honestly did my very, very best to hear everybody, respect everybody, listen to everybody, meet with everybody who wants to meet with me. And I learned a lot. There's people out here right now that I sat with them in meetings, and I learned a lot. I mean, there were terms I hadn't heard, you know, I always found it funny, in 16, when we ran, I found out that everybody thinks because I'm running, I know all the answers. You know, what's going, what's wrong with a lagoon? Or, you know, and then, then I got on council and I heard words I never heard of in my life, like PFAS. So I had to meet with people to tell me what that was about. But that's how you learn, that's how you build relationships. And I feel like I've been taught a lot by a lot of people. So I want to thank our staff. I can't name them all by any means because I'll get in big trouble, but I do have to say a couple who I call out just about every meeting for help. Kevin, I don't know if Kevin's here. Yeah, Kevin, thank you so much, Kevin. Brad, Ms. Wells, you know, we couldn't run a meeting without you guys, and I appreciate that very much. I certainly want to thank our chiefs, Chief Lau and Chief Hetbis, I probably get that wrong, I get the fire one wrong every time, and Chief Lau likes that. But anyway, I thank you guys for your leadership. I've said it every time, and certainly I've known Chief Lau, gosh, Chief Lau actually coached my sons in PAL baseball. So I go back to when he was a young man, which was a long, long time ago. A long, long time ago. But I appreciate very much how our chiefs build teams, how they build relationships. And then I watch as the police officers, and month after month, I hear a story about, it was due to relationships. And I appreciate the relationships, and I appreciate the time, and I appreciate all of our first responders, certainly our police and fire. Thank you so very much. City Manager and City Attorney, we, you know, certainly we went through a lot of ups and downs together, a lot of meetings together. Every now and then, they got to hear my coaching anger in meetings. Then I don't bring it out here too much, but over there. And, and they did a great job, and I appreciate you guys very much. And I just wish you all the very best, and I wish you the best for our city. I'm going to go fast through this one, because so far I'm doing really good. I was a mess when I came in. I'll be honest with you, the coolest thing in the world is when we start having like normal meeting stuff and people weren't happy and all that stuff. I said, "Yeah, now we're here, now we're going at it. We got a meeting going on now." But I want to thank you to my wife, Barbara, raise your hand, people might not know who you are. I will just say that you are my rock, and, oh, boy, stop. You know, move it on. Stop, stop. That is not true. Thank you to my kids. Travis, you're here. One who worked out at Space Center last night, 2:30 a.m. till, oh, is he watching? Of course, he's just the guy that called me. I said, "Come on, you know our mascot." But anyway, and then I got another one who I coached football with at Cocoa High, he's a defensive coordinator. We have practice in the morning because there's no school, 9:00 in the morning, we're in state playoffs, and I told him, "You can't come to this, you got to be at practice." So he's not here. But I'm so blessed, and I kind of tell them that they make my life. My grandkids, raise your hands, grandkids. And my, I think I have my two sisters here, my brother is a doctor, that's what happens when we get old, we go to doctors more than anywhere else. But anyway, my two sisters are here, and I appreciate their support. I couldn't ask for more. And I'm going to say this real fast because this got me wanting to try practicing. Ooh. Try it in bed. So we'll try something else. I guess, I used to, I was blessed to get into the Space Coast Sports Hall of Fame. And when I did, I had to give a speech, didn't give as many back then. So I remember the speech very well. And one of the things I said, outside of the title Dad and Pop-Pop, the term Coach means more to me than anything. Well, Mayor's right up there now. Mayor means a lot to me, and I appreciate that. And I'm going to say it real fast, I want to thank my mom and dad, or I wouldn't be here. Stop. Ooh, I was doing so good. Yeah, home stretch. We really are, got my three-minute clock running there, Terry, Tony. Sorry Stan couldn't be here today. I do have a warm pulse in my heart for old Stan, I got to tell you that. But anyway, I do, I want to thank my mom and my dad, they'd be very proud today. And again, I thank all of you. There's certainly some people here that, some of my TEC members, some other, my PFAS or whatever it's called, PFAS teachers, and my friend from the campaign, I appreciate you being here, I really do. And I know you're here for other stuff too, but it's good to see you. But I do, what I want to kind of end with, because as we all know, I don't want to ever miss anybody, that's why this is all written down. Okay. We came in together, as we talked about in 2007, and I can tell you that, back then, City Manager can tell you, that we averaged seven projects on the project board at any one time. We now average about, how many, 150?
We're at 62 today.
How many?
62.
Okay, excuse me, that's right, 60, okay, so from 6 to 62. So busy times. You guys coming on board? Set your clocks for 1 a.m., you might get out by then.
No.
Anyway, with that, with that, I can honestly say that we are no longer that quiet town east of Orlando, or that slow-moving city south of Daytona. Nope, we are thriving, we are leading, we are Titusville. Your turn. We are Titusville. We are Titusville, damn it. So with that, City Manager? It's been my honor. Grandkids. Hey, if you're going to tell me something, thank you, guys. Who's that? I can't see her. Well, how am I supposed to see her? Laura Lee, I don't know if you got a Laura Lee, but I sent you a thank you text. Grandkids, come on up here real quick, I've only got three of them here, I'm missing one, I think. Missing two. No, no, you're good. My wife's standing right here. All y'all, get, help me in this one, get your hand down here. All right, ready? Get your hand, Nellie, where you at? Put your hand on there. All right, ready with this? Meeting adjourned. Love you guys, it's been my honor, my honor, thank you, thank you for being here, my honor, thank you guys for coming up.